I think Tom LaBange is on his way, but we've got Bill Rosendahl and I'm the Chair of this committee, Janice Hahn, so welcome to the Trade, Commerce and Tourism Committee. It's a special meeting today and it's Wednesday, July 8th. And why don't we start with item one?
Under item one, the mayor submits the, for council confirmation, his reappointment of Mr. Allen Rothenberg to the Board of Airport Commissioners for the term ending June 30th, 2014. The city Ethics Commission staff have reviewed and reported on Mr. Rothenberg's statement of economic interest.
Good morning. You still want to do this?
Yes. I think we're making great progress and I want to continue with it.
Good. And you know, that's kind of what I wanted to let you sort of begin with is, okay, you've served on the commission, sort of following up on what you just said, we've made great progress and we'd like to continue. What do you think we're doing right out there? What can we improve and what, you know, kind of what do you see as our priorities as a city for LAX?
Sure. Well, as you well know, and have been completely supportive of, we are trying to catch up with a lot of deferred maintenance at LAX and bring us into the 21st century to have an airport that we're proud of and that a city such as Los Angeles deserves. And really, since we were able to settle the lawsuit that was holding things up, we have quickly made improvements, as you know, to the South Airfield. We're in the midst, in fact, close to the end of a lot of extensive work at Tom Bradley International Terminal, the inline baggage system, and most importantly, very far along in our planning to put in the gates at Bradley West. Not to mention little things like fixing the facade of the theme restaurant when it fell down and told us, reminded us as if we needed reminding of how old some of the infrastructure is. So, just on a highlight basis-
That's been the theme out there.
Yes, unfortunately, you're absolutely right. And I think it could not have been done without some excellent commissioners that worked with us, but really, most importantly, an amazing staff that deserves a lot of credit for being very professional, very skilled, very hardworking. We also have, I think, changed the tone, and you'll see it later in the agenda, in terms of our relationship with the airlines. They are obviously our partner. There's an adversarial business relationship because it's landlord-tenant, but at the same time, we're partners in the enterprise. And I think that we have been navigating ourselves through some tricky issues, but I think at this point, we have an excellent relationship with the airlines going forward. And it's always important, but when the economy is suffering the way it is, it's vitally important that we do everything we can together to make it work. So I, as I say, I mean, I think we've made a lot of progress, but there's an awful lot still to do and we're working awfully hard to get it done, even under these difficult economic times.
You know, I would say, I feel like there's more activity at LAX now than there ever has been for a long time, in terms of modernizing this airport. And again, kind of really working hard to make this a world-class, first-rate airport for the airlines as well as for the passengers. And you're doing a lot of just hard work on making this happen. And we know because we-
Yes, you see-
We see a lot of that in this committee. Does the commission tackle or is tackling larger issues like regionalization? What are we doing to sort of work on things like connecting other airports, ground transportation? Is the commission involved in, you know, high-speed rail projects? Do you have time to really also kind of insert yourself and the commission in those kinds of issues regionally?
Yes, although obviously, in many of those, we don't have the controlling authority, transportation being key. From a standpoint of regionalization, obviously, we're working hard to keep traffic up at Ontario, which has really suffered more than most airports have. In an unfortunate sort of way, regionalization is less of a pressure point than it was four or five years ago because of the decrease in air traffic. And so, the relative burden on LAX of all of the regional airports is not as great as it used to be, which was obviously one of the purposes for regionalization. But we work hard at it, but again, that's one that the economy tends to control. We can't make people fly into or out of Ontario and we can't make airlines put flights in and out. And as the economy has shrunk, Ontario unfortunately has shrunk in its traffic more than LAX even on a percentage basis. From a ground transportation standpoint, that's where I'm saying, we don't really have the control, other than obviously, if the powers that be are successful in bringing the Green Line up on a higher priority in the MTA projects, we're ready to receive it.
Right. And you know, and I mean, as I said, that's on our agenda today as well, but we would like to hear your, you know, just elaborate a little bit more on that, on the feasibility of bringing the Green Line into the airport. That seems to be-
Amen.
You know, one of the common themes and threads that people talk about when they talk about LAX. They talk about European cities where the ground transportation goes right into the terminals. Many people feel like having the Green Line disconnected from the airport is one of the reasons we have so much traffic congestion in and around LAX. There's those of us in the harbor area that would like to see the Green Line not only connect to the airport, we'd like to see it somehow connect to a harbor line that connects to the cruise terminals, so that on those days when people are making their trips from the airport to San Pedro, just specifically for the cruises, that somehow we could get them into public transportation as opposed to all the shuttles and taxis that are clogging the freeways those days. Nothing against our shuttles and taxis, but you know, we've got to look long-term with congestion and pollution. So, you know, we, you've got, certainly, you've got somebody on this committee, Bill Rosendahl, who's been the biggest champion for connecting the Green Line. But we really want to make sure that the commission and those at LAX see the benefit of that and will push for that.
Absolutely. And it's only a question, as I say, if it gets up where it should be on the priority list of projects. Exactly where it comes into the CTA, we've got a lot of flexibility. Obviously, there's the Manchester Square property and then we'd have to connect it with a people mover. Later on the agenda, we have an issue of acquiring Park One-
Right.
Which, we don't know what the use would be, but a potential use would be, again, as you know, we're talking about a central car rental facility, so they're not all scattered everywhere. So, there's a lot of options that are available to us. And we're on record as saying we support bringing the Green Line into the airport. Once the MTA gets it in the right position, we can talk to them about exactly where the terminal would be at LAX and how we would then move passengers into the terminals. With respect to other ground transportation, as you know, we're now up to four flyaways and are studying many, many more locations. And that's been a terrific benefit to the public, keeping people off of the freeways and keeping pollution out of the air. During our first, my first term, we also installed the consolidated shuttling from the hotels, so that instead of having every hotel have their own-
Right.
-bus coming through, consolidating those, and they're all using alternative fuel vehicles. We've been very aggressive in terms on the issue of pollution, of being as green as you can be at a facility like LAX. And we're waiting, it's not your committee, but we're waiting for the committee to work out new franchise deals with the taxis-
Right.
...so that we can make sure the taxis are also using alternative fuel. So, we're very, those are really top-of-mind issues on everything.
And one of the things, and I know Bill has some questions and Tom, we're joined by Councilmember Tom LaBange.
Thank you very much.
You know, one of the things you haven't mentioned is the concessions. And I also feel like, you know, that's as big of a priority for modernizing this airport, really, as the actual terminals and contact gates that we're adding. Because we, again, hear that all the time from traveling passengers, that why can't LAX be, you know, like Pittsburgh?
We're better than Pittsburgh.
That is a great shopping experience-
Yes.
...in that airport. See all the women in the audience.
Obviously, ours is a little different because there, it's all centralized-
Right.
And we have nine terminals rather than one.
Right. Where are we in 25 words or less?
Okay, we just put out an RFP for five of the terminals. We purposely have withheld on Bradley because that's really going to be big.
Right.
We're going to have huge concession areas, huge concourse areas, and we're fitting it into the final designs to make it work right. And probably next year, we'll do the RFP for the International. And there's two things that we have in mind. One is, it is the first thing that people arriving see-
Yeah.
...and so, just as a visual impression of Los Angeles, we want to not make it look like the third world that it sometimes looks like, but rather, it looks like LA should. And the other is, it's a terrific revenue source-
Right.
...for the airport, and so, we want to make it attractive. We are looking everywhere we can for additional square footage. We're obviously constricted in many ways in that.
Although, many of us who pace the halls at LAX see a lot of unused space that hasn't historically been used to create revenue. So, there's really, I think, a lot of hidden spaces at LAX that could be turned into a revenue source.
We're looking for it everywhere we can find it.
And then, I don't know if you have any statistics, but there was, I don't know if it was a rumor, but we were hearing over the weekend, the last couple of days, as it relates to maybe the Michael Jackson service, that there was an uptick at LAX.
I haven't seen the numbers.
Do you have any of those?
No, I haven't seen the numbers. So, I know, but you know, which is reading about it, that apparently, there were some, many flights that were sold out, which hadn't been before, and maybe some of the staff that's here-
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to actually get a reporting on that, if that's possible. Mr. Rosendahl, I know you have questions.
Yes, indeed, yes, and good morning.
Good morning to you, and we are the proud owners of Four Chickens.
I'm very happy-
They have not started laying yet.
That was my first question, of course.
But they'll start laying shortly after Labor Day, and next time I appear before you, I'll bring some-
Just give them fresh greens and let people like Ms. Hahn, you know, have her.
Yes, I have mine.
She has her allocation for the week, so.
I believe this might be the first time that chickens and egg lane was ever discussed in the Commerce, Trade and Tourism Committee, probably in the history, no?
In 1932, council discussed it briefly due to the relocation of the chicken bar-
Oh, Lily Boulevard. Well, I see Denny Snyder here. Denny, you want him? Sit back in. There you go. Say, bottom line is, the community loves you. You've done a great job. You've shown real leadership. You've done what was the most important, which is transparency, openness and integrity and honesty with the community. There is no secrets, there's no backroom deals, there's no games being played, there's no lawsuits being filed. And that all happened with your leadership there, of the settlement agreement, stipulate agreement that happened. And from then on, modernization, yes, expansion, no. And it's been not only the-
We didn't plan on the fraction, no.
But it's a wonderful moment for all of us.
Thank you.
Just to re-echo the Green Line, if we do go forward with Park One, that is an ideal location, obviously, just location, 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 it's right there, it's part of the property. It might be the spot. I'm obviously open to wherever we can make it happen. Now that Measure R is passed, we're collecting the funds for it. It was one of the headlines, on a thanks to Jenny Arpaiza's leadership and Ms. Hahn's leadership. It got into the bill, it became a reality, and now the collaborative effort between LAWA and MTA is happening. And I'm looking forward to us getting to that point, when we can actually have that stub into the airport, down into the harbor, all the way, as she's suggesting there, to St. Pedro area, and then, of course, up into Lincoln Boulevard to Santa Monica into there. So, we'll have enough self-relief. So, I'm very happy with how you talked about it. Do you feel pretty comfortable, Tom Bradley Terminal 2012?
Yes. We start out with, I feel very comfortable about 2010's, early completion of what we're doing now. And again, later on your agenda, our number of items relating to agreements we've entered into with American Airlines, and a lot of that, we'll be sure that we can facilitate the timely completion of Bradley West gates in 2012 as planned.
I really appreciate that. The golf course, the three holes are on target. I'm having people coming up to me. I was in the Westchester Parade on 4th of July, I had about a dozen guys shouting out in different locations, "Great, Rosendahl, we're looking forward to those three holes." So, how do you feel about that timeframe?
We're on course, and again, it's-
On course.
Yeah, as the agenda indicates, including, at an insubstantial cost to us, we are accelerating on the seed sod issue, so that January of next year, I'll challenge you to 18 holes.
Oh, it'd be a lot of fun. Since I don't golf, I might-
I don't either. That's why it's a fair challenge.
I'm a paddy. You know, the north side, 340 acres, it's a big deal to Westchester. Everybody cares about it and the community planning has started. LAWA and Planning Department are working together and there'll be that ability to go forward with it. We've also identified near Otis College, a piece of land that maybe could be declared surplus and they could possibly buy the land. There was a motion just passed by the Westchester Playa del Rey Neighborhood Council, supporting the idea of Otis. I appreciate your leadership on that Otis. Any problems you see with the commission at this point?
Well, in all candor, I am not up to date on that, so I can't answer.
Okay. Well, it's moving in the right direction. We're very happy and we look forward to the whole 340-acre area being dealt with appropriately. The runway status slides, I'm very happy that Marion Blakely took leadership from us in that meeting that Ms. Harmon and Mr. Knobby and myself were part of. We ended up with the very first moment of that happening. What's your sensing of the second phase of it, for the full implementation of the runway status slides?
We're working on it. It's a question, again, it's not us, it's really FAA process.
We're excited because it is a safety issue, and the sooner the entire airport is covered with it, the happier we'll be. We'd love LAWA's staff to come back with a report on the status timetable of what we think would happen on that one. The runway, North Runway Safety Study, your leadership on that's been terrific, too. It's open, we're going through the process. What's your sensing right now of the phase of the professors getting into it and so on?
There's a meeting scheduled for, is it September 23rd?
August.
Anyway.
August, we're going up.
Right. To Sacramento to meet with the people to get a status report, see where to go and give them our input.
July 28th.
July 28th, okay.
And that's great, and we're on target with that. And the last question is, any update of the tower and the staffing and the experienced staffing and the numbers there?
Again, I don't mean to duck things, but it's FAA, you know, we're on them. You know, one of the frustrating things about being on the commission is that the things that bother so many people, justifiably, are not under our control. All we can do is hammer away, whether it's the FAA or the TSA, you know. And so, as far as we're concerned, we put as much heat as we possibly can to make sure that the staffing is complete.
Great. Well, we want to thank you very much again for your leadership. I know staff will report on some of these other issues. You've got a great group, you're doing great, community loves you, we love you. Thank you for stepping up for another-
Thank you.
Mr. LaBange?
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Commissioner, you do a great job for the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank you and also in your past work on many endeavors, especially with the World Cup, which really elevated Los Angeles in your efforts there. Issues that I wanted to talk about, just as far as landing fees, where are we in comparison on the West Coast and including, what would say, Phoenix, Las Vegas? What I worry about in the future is that people may bypass us to get to Las Vegas or to, from the Asian market.
Right now, we're extremely competitive. The issue is, as we spend the money to modernize the airport and calculate how much is contributed from what areas, keeping it at that level. Right now, and again, staff can answer you with specific numbers, including Mr. Martin, the calculations we have to complete the capital improvements that we are in process of doing, and the amount of landing fees and other fees, we'll still be very competitive. So, and by the way, that is one of the issues with respect to Ontario. Ontario is not competitive, and that also is one of the reasons-
Are they too high or too-
Too high.
Too high? Okay.
Also- One other thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think it's important. We are also really being aggressive to get Van Nuys Airport, at least at break-even. We just, between the aircraft and the non-airport use, it's, to me, unjustifiable that we are subsidizing corporate jets and private hobbyists. And one of the things we're doing there is increasing fuel charge, looking at increasing landing fees, and getting the various leases up to market, because they had been ignored, unfortunately, for a long time.
Right.
And obviously, also, we're being aggressive with respect to the noise issues.
Right. If you go over there and you flip that switch, sometimes people don't understand where the power comes from, or if you turn a faucet, where the water comes from. But the same is true, I think people don't understand how airports operate. Is there any public information, when you're sitting in a hall, that there's a little poster said, "Your fees make this," you know, some communication, and I don't know if airport staff should do that, to look at that, just to tell the people, because information is knowledge is power. So, I hope they could look at that.
That's a great idea.
So, that we could do that. The other thing, too, I know a lot of these concessions are, but if I have an extra three or four hours and feel I could run out of an airport, I'd like to. And I know, Mr. Rosendahl, you're big on tourism and we're working every which way to help Venice. Is there any shuttles out of the airport that get you there and back to either Westchester or Venice, you know, a quick drop-in, too?
That's interesting. I'm not aware of a specific program for that. Obviously, people on their own can do it.
We're working on it, yeah.
Yeah, we should do that, just to get a little loop, you know, and maybe just a midday loop. If you've got three hours and you want to get lost in LA but not get lost, come to Venice.
Long San Pedro's in that loop.
I was going to say-
Maybe a long loop, maybe a long loop. If you miss your flight, you've got to spend the night.
Westchester, Venice, San Pedro.
And all that work that's going on at the Fox Plaza.
Right.
So, we'll get Westfield to pay for it.
Yeah, well, also, we want to make sure to, not to be totally parochial, but we should run them, we should run them into Los Angeles as opposed to another location. But lastly, I want to say, absolutely, the Green Line to Sepulveda. Don't settle for aviation. Don't make it a longer trip. I could see a little quick shuttle of-
No shuttle.
No, when I say shuttle, is what you have at other airports.
People mover.
A people mover, excuse me. I stand corrected for that, a people mover, but no further than Sepulveda in my mind. Lastly, iconically, and it was under Mr. Riordan's administration, that I know Ms. Martin will smile, but the art that was done there that was criticized, does anybody remember that at all, that the art was criticized, the columns? Now, when you look at the world and they show the world, they show Los Angeles, the picture they show of Los Angeles is LAX and those art pieces. I think, Ms. Hahn, and I know Mr. Rosendahl always, this committee should honor that artist again, whenever that anniversary is of that, because it has become iconic. I don't know what you feel about the art, but when I look at-
I'm delighted, columns.
Yes. When I look at the early morning, anybody watch Morning Joe here at all? Maybe too early for, okay, good, we can't sleep. All right, we got that. They show LAX and boom, there it is right there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a public comment on this item. Arnold Sacks?
Thank you. I love when you rush me.
Well, I've got mine.
I got it, I got it, it's okay. I just said, I love you.
Fine.
Good morning. Thank you. I'd also like to comment on the great progress being made at LAWA. The construction cost went from $3 billion to $5 billion to $8 billion. That's pretty good progress. Including, you talked about the openness, choosing the architects, that was an open plan with the leadership there that had to go back for two meetings. And the architect at one, I don't know if you noticed the model that they have in their headquarters there, that's missing the access for the planned midfield concourse. There's no runway access to those gates. You should check it out. But that was $41 million. Bradley West and the new building east of the Bradley Terminal, I don't remember, when you first brought this up, Councilman Rosendahl, in front of the City Council, for the beginning of the project, for the renovations, those were never mentioned as part of the construction. As a matter of fact, I'm still curious to find out what's going on with the two bonds that are issued for LAWA. The $950 million bond issued by the city of LA that you championed, and the $950 million bond that was issued by LAWA back last June.
Is he speaking on this item one about Commissioner Rothenberg?
I'm speaking about Commissioner, this is his leadership, these are programs that he led. These are programs that were issued on the, at the Airport Commission. These are all programs done there. I'm glad you brought up the controller issue, but never got an answer on that personally. Is there a problem with the staffing still? I mean, you can send memos and you can send messengers, but is there a problem with it? Is the Qantas 8380 landing on a regular basis? It was supposed to be starting. And what's the status of the Palmdale Solar Plan with the DWP? That was part of those. DWP's big plan was to buy some, get some land from, in Palmdale, and build solar paneling that was shot down by the public in the vote. The concessions? How about the taxi, Authorized Taxi Administration having the-
This is 20 questions?
The, yes ma'am, it is. Somebody's got to ask questions. It certainly doesn't come from the vanilla council. How about the Authorized Taxi Cab Supervision having the property getting rent from the catering truck? Has that issue been resolved? I know the city's got a budget deficit and it's only $27,000 a month, but it's still money that should go to the city. And in addition to that, the IRS ruling, you talked about the new program for the taxis, the IRS ruling stating that the drivers should be employees, or actually employees of the companies, and not subcontractors? Has that been looked into?
I would welcome, if you want to put in that in writing to me, I'll look at some of those issues.
I'll make you a bill of interest for you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And the living wage ordinance that the city, that this council wants to invoke, or raise the salary or add health benefits. They're looking to add a quarter to every ticket that's purchased or used at LAWA. It'll generate, right now, approximately 60 million passengers, be about $15 million, almost 15 million quarters is $4 million. Do you see that as a possibility happening? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation for Mr. Rothenberg to be, to extend his term on the Airport Commission? Okay, it's unanimous. We'll move that to full City Council. Item two.
Thanks, Alan.
That's in council today. Under item two, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a lease with Westchester Golf Partners for the restoration, operation and maintenance of the Westchester Golf Course, located at 6900 Manchester Boulevard. The lease would have a term of 10 years and an option to renew for an additional 20 years if the lessee makes additional improvements on the property. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval.
Finally.
Yes.
Finally, we're having the-
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. We're having the extra three holes on this golf course. So, this new lease will increase the acreage of the golf course from 60 to 83 acres, and it will require a capital investment of $2.5 million by the Westchester Golf Partners. And it also includes an option to extend that lease by 20 years with our council's approval. So, I know, this is Bill's big item, he's going to ask most of the questions. The only question I was going to ask is, is there any LAWA funding that will be invested in this golf course?
All the, Steve Martin, Jeep Operating Officer of LAWA, all the funds that are going to be invested in the golf course are invested by Westchester Golf Partners, except for the fact that we have given them a rent credit for investment in sod to accelerate the delivery of the three holes. So, that will be investment from us in terms of foregone rent.
Okay.
But much of that will get back by usage of the golf course sooner than it would otherwise have been used if we didn't invest in getting the holes delivered sooner.
Very good. So, we think we're going to have a lot more people playing at that golf course.
I think if the golf course, people invest in the golf course and it's 18 holes, we expect a lot of reuse, yes.
Really? I never get it, because I think you're supposed to get a low score, so I don't know why people don't want to play golf on a 15-hole. I don't know, I'm just saying. Mr. Rosendahl, take it away.
And I don't even play golf, just so the world can know this, but bottom line is, what's your sense of a timetable? We going to cut a ribbon before the end of the year? What's the frame?
Right now, we're waiting for one thing to occur before-
The FAA.
...construction can start, which is environmental clearance from FAA. We expect that, hopefully, within the next few weeks. Our understanding from the lessee is that it takes three months to build- Um, our understanding from the, uh, LSC is it takes three months to build the three holes, and three months for the, uh, sod grass to really take hold. So we're shooting at about January for when we expect, yeah, we'll be on course shooting for January, uh, for when we expect, uh, the three holes to be in service.
Okay. Just give us a report back in three months, uh, and see if we can kind of push it for the end of the year as a New Year's, something or another, if possible.
Maybe you could learn to play golf by then.
Well, you never know. You can teach an old dog some new tricks.
And Ms. Rosen, Mike Molina, External Affairs, as soon as we hear from FAA, we'll give your office a call.
Okay, good question. When this is all done, how available, I just mentioned the Westchester Venice shopping opportunity, how available would it be to say, "Hey, you got four hours, and you wanna go hit some, uh," there's a driving range there, too, as well, huh?
Yes, indeed.
Do you, could you pull any people out of, uh, LAX over there, a little shuttle in there? Have you thought about that, Michael?
Great idea.
Um, I've already spoken to Lori Hughes from the, uh, the bid about some possibilities of providing access to the golf course for passengers that are literally having five or six hours to kill.
Right, okay, good, all right.
That's a great idea.
All right.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will, uh, is there a motion to approve this lease?
With enthusiasm.
Okay. Oh, you know what? We're not gonna vote yet, because we have, uh, some comments. We have Denny Schneider.
I can just make that real short.
We got, well, I want to put them on a minute apiece, 'cause we've, we've, uh, got Denny Schneider, I have Paul Ballam, and Arnold Snacks, Sacks, on this issue, so one of you guys might have to.
Mine is real simple.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow.
Actually, people will be upset, 'cause their scores aren't gonna go up.
I know. I, I would have been, you know.
But that's great.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Denny. Paul?
Hi, I'm with Westchester Golf Partners and American Golf, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself to this committee, and thank you for the opportunity, and, um, express my gratitude to the professionalism of, uh, the Lawa staff, Steve Martin, Debbie Powers, um, Michael Strauss, and the Boeck Board. This is an amazing effort here. I mean, right now, uh, golf courses aren't being built, in fact, more golf courses are closing, um, than are being constructed. And the creativity of putting this together, to finance this and to make this happen, um, is a, a testament to the efforts of everyone involved. And, uh, we look forward to getting these holes built as soon as possible, and, um, making everybody's scores go up.
I know, I didn't think that was the point of golf, but, um.
Well, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate your partnership.
Very happy about it, and, and that's real important.
Right, we appreciate the partnership with you as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Arnold?
Thank you. I just want to double check, I believe you answered it, though, but the maintenance and the lease and the, and the, everything that's involved with this golf course will be based on the new 18 holes, not on the 15-hole, 'cause sometimes there's a big divide between what's said here and what the reality is. Seen it happen all too often in some other, uh, items that are on agendas, specifically the L.A. Marathon. Um, just want to make sure that everything is gonna be for 18 holes, and, and these people have that in effect in the contracts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and again, this is a, a great, um, message, I think, while we are modernizing the airport. We're improving facilities and terminals and gates, uh, moving runways to the south. Uh, you know, we're also benefiting, uh, the community of Westchester, uh, and we're, uh, investing in something that will be of recreational value, not only to Westchester, but really to the region. So this is a, uh, this is a good thing that we're doing today, so.
I just want to thank Debbie Bowers, too, especially, 'cause when I made a couple of calls at a certain point, uh, to move things along, and the commission then acted on it, it was well done, and I really appreciate the staff's quick response.
Thank you very much. So we'll, uh, is there a motion to?
So moved.
So moved, uh, seen no objection, we'll unanimously approve that new lease for 18, to increase the acreage, uh, and build the, the three holes.
You and I could do a benefit with Tommy, the three of us, huh?
Okay.
For children, something.
I, I could. Let's take items three, four, and five, uh, together, since they are related.
Sure, yes, you should make, have separate votes on each of the items, but you can consider them together.
Okay, but let's talk about them together.
Yes, we have, um, a gate and operations agreement with American Airlines, uh, an amendment to, uh, and amendments to two leases with American Airlines, um, for aircraft maintenance facilities. Um, and these are all, um, changes that have been suggested to facilitate construction of the cross-field taxiway.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, this, these items, again, are, are, are a huge deal, uh, in terms of, uh, our modernization of the airport, and this was always kind of a little sticking point, uh, when we talked about building gates, uh, on the west side of, of the Bradley Terminal. Uh, so why doesn't someone explain this memorandum of agreement between, uh, Lawa and American Airlines, and why this is important, uh, when we talk about modernizing Bradley?
Um, Steve Martin, Chief Operating Officer of Lawa, um, just to give you some background, American, um, has, uh, two leaseholds in the center of the airport. One is their original, uh, aircraft maintenance leasehold, the other is the TWA leasehold, and you may remember that American acquired TWA in 2001, and they got both of those properties. Those properties are, um, under lease until May of 2010, and certain aspects of the leasehold we need access to in order to construct the cross-field taxiway that's already been approved. And American loses about half of the leasehold as a result of that activity. And this, uh, amendment would all give them some replacement premises, so that the functions that they're providing in the current site can be replicated elsewhere.
What functions are they performing in the current site?
It's all kinds of, uh, maintenance operations. It's ground service equipment maintenance, aircraft maintenance, aircraft parking and staging. It's really just basically back-of-the-house stuff that the passengers don't see.
Right, but it was right smack in the middle
Right.
of where we wanted to do the cross-field taxiway.
Right, and so, American actually has permitted us to, uh, enter the site already, and we're doing construction already. Um, they're, uh, they're allowing us in, is revocable, uh, and this amendment's sort of tying up the, the loose end, so that we can, uh, be in there properly, and they can have replacement facilities in place.
Was this a straight replacement of property, or was there money involved? Are we?
Well, um, there's both money and replacement property. They are not getting back all the acreage that they're losing, they're getting back less than half of what they're losing. Um, but some of the functions that they provide, for example, equipment maintenance facilities are gonna be demolished, and those functions need to be provided in other vacant buildings at the airport. In order to provide the functions, they're gonna improve those facilities to provide ground service equipment maintenance, and we're reimbursing them for those costs.
I see.
So when they get the replacement facilities in place, it won't be at a cost to them, and we've agreed with them that in lieu of condemning part of their leasehold, they'll just get replacement facilities and the cost to retrofit those facilities and make them provide the same function.
So that's a good deal.
Yes.
For, it sounds like for everybody.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's good for us, because, um, we did not want to delay the taxiway project. It would have probably, would have cost us money in terms of the bidding environment
Right.
by getting the projects out to bid now.
Right.
We're actually saving a lot in construction costs.
Right. And American Airlines understands, as one of our partners, as, uh, as Ellen talked about in the beginning, uh, they understand, uh, what we're doing in terms of modernization, and, and they understand, uh, you know, that, that this is for a reason, and, and it's ultimately gonna make for a, a world-class airport.
They've been, um, very understanding, given the fact that the planes, the Group Six airplanes, A380s and others, that, uh, some of these projects are designed to accommodate. American doesn't happen to fly those airplanes, but their partners, like Qantas, do. And I think they've taken a position that if they remain whole in this transaction, you know, they're willing to cooperate, because they do want the projects to go forward.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, what I'd like to say is, anybody here from American Airlines? Uh, well, I want to do a public shout-out and thank them, American Airlines, for their cooperation with us and working with us. They truly were a partner. It required them to appreciate where we wanted to go, so thank you, American Airlines. And, you know, the cross-field taxiway can't really happen without that support, and that is a safety issue, as well as an efficiency issue. So hats off to American Airlines.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. LeBonde?
I just want to say, move forward.
Okay.
Should we do each one separately?
Yes, so we'll, um, do each one of these separately.
Yes, under, um, item three, uh, you were considering a gate and operations agreement with American Airlines.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Uh, we'll approve that.
Under item four, lease number 1455 with American Airlines, uh, making deletions and additions.
So moved.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, that's approved.
And under item five, a second, um, lease with, uh, for aircraft maintenance at LAX for American Airlines, making, uh, additional deletions and additions, uh, in their leasehold.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, and we'll, uh, we'll approve that without objection. Okay. Move those forward. Good job, everybody. I know it's, those are always difficult to, uh, negotiate, so good job.
Well done.
Well done.
Yep.
Okay, so now we're on item six.
We have a lot of fest today.
Yes, um, under item six, you have, um, the action of the board on June 22nd to approve the acquisition of, uh, commercial property known as the Park One Parking Lot, uh, located on West Century Boulevard adjacent to, uh, to the airport. Property consists of approximately 20 acres. The sellers are, um, three partners, West Century, AMB Park One at LAX, and AMB Property. The purchase price is 126 million, .5 million dollars, and this is here before you, uh, because council adopted your motion, uh, to assert jurisdiction. Also, the CIO has submitted a, a report and recommendations, which, uh, you should ask them to describe.
Right. And, you know, um, when, uh, we were kind of following, uh, this purchase of this property, and so when the announcement was finally made, and it, uh, is an item that wouldn't necessarily come to the City Council, uh, but since it was the largest real estate transaction in the county, uh, you know, it felt like there, there were some questions that I, I think, um, the public would like us to ask and, and find out, so this is why we asserted jurisdiction. It wasn't a hostile 245 by any means, it was just an opportunity, uh, to ask some of these questions and, um, allow, uh, Lawa to come and, uh, kind of give us your thinking, your reasoning on, on why this was so important, why you felt the 126 million was a good, uh, purchase price, and maybe, um, talk a little bit about, uh, I know there's nothing specific right now, but good, good opportunity to, um, let the public hear, uh, why you spent this money, why it was so valuable to own this piece of property, and maybe, uh, what your plans are for, um, the future of this Park One site. I think everybody knows where this location is. It's clearly, as, uh, Councilmember Rosendahl's always says, "Location, location, location." This is a prime, uh, real estate corner, uh, really, in, in all of this area, so, uh, maybe you can explain to us, first of all, why the purchase price, uh, you felt was a good deal, and then why it was so important that you, um, gained control of this piece of property, and then maybe what, uh, you're thinking about using it for.
Let me, uh, if you don't mind, answer in reverse order. Uh, the importance, I think, uh, is clear. Uh, you have a privately-owned piece of property, not just within the footprint of LAX, uh, but actually inside the central terminal area. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's a shame, you know, hindsight is 20/20, but it's a shame we didn't acquire it the last time it came out on the market. Um, but now it did come on the market, uh, and we felt, as long as the terms were justifiable, and we can get into those in a moment, uh, that it would be a huge mistake not to acquire that property. There are many potential uses. Obviously, uh, we can't at this time, till we learn more about some of the other plans, focus on exactly what use, and then we'll have to go through the appropriate, uh, processes, uh, to get it approved. But, but it, it's clear that, that, that should be part of LAX. Um, and, uh, Mr. Martin can explain in more detail the financial part, but suffice it to say that until, uh, we find and, and identify and utilize it for airport purposes, we're gonna run it the same way it's been run as a parking lot, and so from a financial standpoint, we'll get a return on our investment, uh, and, and so from a financial standpoint, it's not hurting us in any way, uh, and indeed, uh, the yield that we have, uh, figured that we're gonna get based on the parking lot is higher than you're getting in the bank today, uh, so, so we'll actually get a decent return on our investment, but obviously, that's not the long-term purpose, it just justifies putting, putting the money up.
Uh, and, you know, and, uh, so, I know, I know we have another item agenda next about the, I think, the billboard, but just in terms of the parking, um, is it gonna be run exactly the same, or same company?
Yes, there's somebody that has a management contract on it, and part of the transaction assumes, uh, that sublease going forward.
Now, um, and I know who wants to answer this one, I know when we, we began looking at, which is something I think a lot of people had questions about, seemed like there was, it was a lower price when it was first, it was like 120 million or something, so I think there was a lot of surprise that, uh, it ended up at 126.
If you don't mind.
And, and, you know, and people, and people would want me to ask, gee, isn't this, you know, kind of a downturn, and isn't this where you're supposed to make these great deals on, on, uh, real estate, and, uh, kind of like?
If you don't mind, I'll, Mr. Martin asked a tough, answered a tough question.
Right, seems like it was.
Well, I'm, um, Steve Martin again.
Did you offer more than the asking price?
Uh, well, we, um, this is a long negotiation, let me just say. We went back and forth with the seller a lot. Um, they put it on the market, they had it listed, and so it was a lot of give and take about price, where they started and where we started, where, where closer to us than we were to where they started, I can tell you that much. Um, we had appraisals done, we constrained those appraisals in directing the appraiser, largely because we were afraid that the appraisals would become public information during the middle of negotiation and be used against us. So we paid $5 million more than the appra, than the 120 that was originally, uh, kind of came out as the appraisal number.
Right.
So that actually made us glad that we didn't have a higher appraisal number, once it sort of got out there, that the appraisal said 120. But we basically ran the numbers, um, in.
Explain to me, explain to me again why you, why you're above the, why was, because they, what they were asking for was.
We constrained the appraiser to a particular set of assumptions, that is, the current parking lot operation. Normally, in appraisal,
I see.
you do the highest and best use of the property, which would be something other than a surface parking lot, and you'd pay more.
I see.
So by saying to the appraiser, "You will appraise it for its current use," as opposed to its highest and best use.
I see.
We came up with a number that was lower than the, let's say, the fair market value that highest and best use would indicate. But that was part of trying to drag the seller's price down in the negotiation process.
See, so there was a method.
Right.
This madness.
And once we arrived at a price, um, we made sure that it was a price where the financing of that price would not impair our ability to improve the airport, so that it's sort of a self-financing parking lot.
I see. Okay, that's a very good answer. And now, is there environmental cleanup if we move it from being a parking lot to another use?
There's actually ongoing environmental cleanup on the property currently. Honeywell, who is the, there's, for 50 years, that property was used as an aircraft parts manufacturing facility, and so there's all kinds of issues with the property in terms of its environmental. Honeywell International, who's the ultimate owner who succeeded to that company, is currently remediating the property and cleaning it up under the supervision of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they've provided an acknowledgement of an indemnity agreement that is satisfactory from a legal perspective and satisfactory from a business perspective to the city.
So does the seller assume the cost?
So Honeywell, no, the seller is not Honeywell, who's a previous owner in the chain of title, is the one who's responsible. They're a very substantial corporation with, I think, $32 billion a year in annual sales and $2 billion or $3 billion in cash on their balance sheet, so they're continuing the cleanup under the supervision of the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
I see.
It's good that you brought up the issue, Madam Chair, because in the CAO report, there were four caveats that the CAO placed as part of their recommendations, all dealing with this environmental issue. And just for the committee's knowledge, we're working on, in fact, we've worked on all four of these caveats, including receiving the written verification from Honeywell that the remediation will continue, that we've fully briefed the board on certain risks as a result of the environmental assumption, and working with the water quality, regional water quality board in this continuing effort.
And I guess the big question is, you know, what's going to be the use of this? And certainly, we've been talking about, this could be a possible green line location connecting it to the airport. At what point are we going to see Lawa begin to, you know, explore the possibilities of the future use of this property, and how can we stay involved in that and, you know, kind of be a part of that strategy?
Clearly, you'll stay involved, and we'll report to you, and ultimately, undoubtedly, need your approval. It's ongoing, as best I can say. I mean, you have the MTA and Measure R issue to deal with, you have the central car rental issue to deal with, you have ultimately what's going to happen with respect to the North Airfield, and so all those are in the mix, and until we get answers on all those, we can't really settle in on what's the best use for the airport, but you'll be constantly...
But now you own it, and it's up to us to decide.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosendahl?
The chair asked all the questions. I'm thrilled. It is location, location, location. I'm happy it came on the market in our timeframe here as a group, and I look forward. What is your sense of a timetable when you might come back with remediation done and have two or three or four different options for the use of the land? Six months from now?
I think within six months, we'll have the beginnings of the ideas of what the alternatives are. I think one thing, when you look at the site, you'll notice there's a road going around it. Everything that is transportation-related goes around this site.
Right.
And that, every time people have started to examine planning alternatives and environmental alternatives, this has been a barrier to thinking through what the options are. If we own it, we can get people to start thinking through what the options are, and we think we'll have some outlook on that in six months.
Right. Gives us a lot more flexibility.
If that's possible, Madam Chair.
With our master plan.
Six months, they could give us a report back.
Great idea.
The community could be engaged in this process with us, so that we're all excited about six months from now.
Great idea.
One question. What was the property taxes paid for before you bought it?
I don't know what the numbers, but the property taxes continue to get paid by the lessee, the way the, it's, I think, a possessory tax. I let the city attorney speak to it.
Really?
But under the structure where the lease stays in place, the lessee is obligated to pay the property tax anyway.
Not a government land? That's very good, then.
Yeah.
Well, it's, my understanding, one of the lawyers here knows it better than I, but the...
Give me your name for the record, she didn't before.
Kelly Martin.
I'm sorry, Kelly Martin, city attorney. I apologize.
Counselor, barrister.
Unrelated.
Not related.
The tenants with leases pay a possessory users' tax to the county.
Okay, I just would love to know what the price is, just to know what the...
We'll get that information before you go in.
With more and more public land we acquire, the less and less taxes we pay. Just a simple question. Thank you very much. Support this purchase long overdue.
Thank you. And before we vote on that, we have Denny Snyder to address this committee on this item.
Very good. I'm going to run along, Madam Chair. Again, I came as an opportunity to support the airport. I think it's a great idea. When properties like this come along, we have to take advantage of them. And this is, gives, if, for instance, the North Side Safety Study comes back and says at some time way in the future we have to expand, that could give us an opportunity to add another terminal there and not have to go north, but to go south. Or it could allow us, or it could allow us to...
Yeah.
Oh, of course.
Go south.
It could also allow us, with some of the ideas that we've given already, on how to fix some of the congestion in the central terminal area. All of those things are available.
Thank you, Denny. Okay, is there a motion to approve the CAO's recommendations? It's been moved and seconded. Without objection, we'll approve that item. Go on to item seven.
Under item seven, we have the boards...
Oh, right. Okay, is it related? Yeah, go ahead.
Submittel of the assignment and assumption of the existing lease with PNF LAX, which operates the Park One Parking Lot, and the existing sublease with Regency Outdoor Advertising, which manages advertising billboards on the property, the same Park One Parking Lot property.
Right. And I really want to take these items separately, because the first one was really, we wanted a lot of questions about why you did it, was it a good deal, what's your thinking? And this one is the actual logistics of owning that piece of property, and it has to do with the leases of the Regency Outdoor Advertising and the parking lot?
Yes.
Right, so do you want to just quickly explain it?
Yes, Bill Hoenig, CAO's office. What you have in front of you is a proposal by the Department of Airports, too. Basically, as part of the purchase of this property, there are two existing leases. Charter section 606 requires council action on assumption of these leases because they are obligating the city for an extended period of time.
Right.
In essence, what is happening is airports will take over these leases and continue their operation for the existing term of those leases, but council action is necessary on that.
Okay. And just big questions, it sounds like you guys already answered, we're going to continue to run it as a parking lot?
Correct.
And the revenue, we're going to, do we know what our, what annual revenue we get from that being a parking lot?
Thank you.
I believe it's about eight and a half million dollars.
Eight and a half million dollars? Okay. That's nice. And then the billboards. How long is the contract with Viacom for that?
Through 2016.
I mean, it's...
It was totally the 25-year lease. It goes until 2016.
Oh, 2016. And do we know what will happen at that point?
That there is a provision for an option that could, excuse me, no, I do not know what would happen after that. That would be the responsibility of the Department of Airports.
I think there are some relocation obligations for some of the billboards if we develop the site and need to move the billboards as a result.
And how much revenue do we get from this lease?
Between 400, 600,000 dollars a year.
Right, but I think that that revenue goes to the operator, and then the operator pays us the 8.3 million.
It's sub-agreement on the...
Okay, so the parking lot operator, it's a sub, the billboard's a sub, really? Is that the best way, is that the best deal that we can get?
We, this was all negotiated as take it or leave it, subject to the transaction.
Really?
We did not go into trying to redo the transit. Yeah.
Okay, so the lease with the parking lot operator goes to 2016? And then, at that point, do we have an opportunity to take it over directly?
If we're going to do development on the property...
Right.
We have a 90-day termination clause.
Okay. So if we're going to do some there, we don't want a billboard?
So to the extent that the city goes through a planning process and an environmental process and comes up with another use, there's an opportunity to do something sooner.
And do we have to replace their site?
On the billboard lease, it depends what you're doing with the development. If you're developing the entire site, I don't believe you would have to replace those billboards, but if you're developing part of the site and there's a space on the rest of the site to move the billboard, then you would have to move the billboard, but it kind of depends what you're doing with the development. So we'll have to sort through those issues as we know what we're doing. It's hard to, until you know what you're doing, you can't say what the consequences are.
Right. And is there a, what's the word I'm looking for? Is there a certain distance that that has to be relocated if we're only developing part of it?
It relates to the site. So it's the rights of the Regency Outdoor Advertising vis-à-vis their sublease relates to the property. So it's, the distance is the parcel of the property.
So we don't have, if we...
It's not that we have to relocate them somewhere else in the city. That's not our obligation.
Okay, just on the site?
Yes, it just relates to the site.
And that's only if we're developing part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
I move to approve.
Okay.
If I might, before you vote, I have an answer to your question on the taxes. The property taxes, I'm told, are running approximately a million dollars a year. They will be reassessed as a possessory interest tax, and it will probably be lowered to a degree, but taxes will continue to be paid.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, Ms. Martin.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this sublease and sublease and all the conditions therein. Okay, that's...
Seconded.
Okay, we will, unanimously, will approve that and move that on to the city council. Okay, item eight.
Under item eight, we have consideration of motion Rosendahl and Bong introduced on June 24th proposing that council request Lawa to conduct a feasibility study of extending the Metro Green Line directly into the central terminal area at LAX.
Okay, this is a...
Big one.
A big one. So, Councilmember Rosendahl, I'm going to even let you...
We don't even have much to say. We've had a good discussion here. I just want a sense of a timetable, coming back, and when we can get a better sense of where the green line might go, and I know all options are on the table.
I think the six months we discussed earlier is a window where we can say we'll have some look about alignment questions.
Right.
There are some, I'm aware, very complex engineering questions having to do with the electrical supply to the green line and how that might work its way into the airport. So I think we'll have a first look-see at those questions in the six-month period we discussed earlier, even if we don't have all the issues related to feasibility resolved. And obviously, this requires us to be talking to Metro...
Right.
About what their plans are, because their plans...
It's key, because we've talked with Metro, there's a new head of Metro now, I've met with the new head of Metro, he's on board, and it's the collaborative effort between Lawa and Metro that's going to be the key play. So my hope is, in the next six months, that there are several meetings, at my office for sure, and I'm sure Ms. Hunt would want this and Mr. Labonge, an update, just of where we are in those discussions, and if there's anything we need to do with the MTA Board or with you guys to keep us on track and keep it going in the right direction.
On track, yes. Thank you.
On track. Wait, don't wait. You know, as part of the feasibility study, will you look at locations? I mean, will you look at this new Park One site? Or, I know there's been suggestion that it goes down 96, kind of behind the hotels. Is this going to be part of the feasibility study?
Yeah, we've scoped out what, how we'd approach the problem. The alignment is a big deal, how it interfaces with a people mover. Once you get as close as you can to the airport, you still have a long way to the Bradley Terminal...
Right.
No matter where you stop, and how we get, you know, interface between the Metro and our own local transportation systems, a key part of that, so alignment's pretty important.
And one of the history points is aviation and Century could be a spot for all of the other dreams when they become true, be it the subway-to-the-sea strategy, or be it the Crenshaw Line, the Harbor Line. Everybody could go to that one spot, and then it would be a multipurpose location, there could be housing on top, it could be a great opportunity, and then right into the airport from there, as they make one little link, these other lines, that would then take them into the terminal somewhere that's so convenient that you get your bags off of your train, and you just move forward with getting toward your airline. So these discussions are critical. The good news is, the initial feasibility study of the Green Line was done in the 90s, so it just needs to be dusted up. We don't need to waste a lot of time.
Right, I think that's what I was going to ask. What are the, do we know of other feasibility studies, and where is that, and that have been done about the Green Line?
Yeah, I'm not that familiar with it personally. I'd have to come back to you on that. I don't know what you're going to say.
I mean, certainly, that's something we would like you to, again, get off the shelf and dust off and see what relevant information is in there. And, you know, and I think, like you said, I mean, we still need to, Metro is a big part of this, you know, MTA, our own Department of Transportation, I mean, all these organizations are a big part of it, but I think the key is, we want to make sure Lawa is ready to connect this Green Line to the airport. I mean, we need you to show real leadership, come back with a study that shows that it absolutely is feasible, because, you know, everyone's always waiting for the other organization to say whether or not, and I mean, the other organization are not going to go through with appropriating funding or doing their own, getting them on track, so to speak, studies if they don't feel like the airport is ready to receive it. So we really want this to be the premier study that really finally says, yes, it's feasible, here's where it can go, and here's how it's going to make a huge difference in congestion relief really all over Los Angeles.
And if I could dovetail with that point, you know, the voters voted for Measure R.
Right.
And in the down economy, to get that kind of approval, in part had to do with the Green Line and how it was positioned in the motion and the public perception that it's a no-brainer that almost every major airport on the planet has a light rail that goes into it, then you could move around and go wherever you need to go. So people bought into it historically, so it would be a real service to the people who voted, that they're able to say, hey, it happened, and that's a critical trust factor with the electorate.
That's true, because everyone says the reason they don't take the Green Line to the airport is the inconvenience of stopping, you know, short, having to get off with your luggage and try to get a shuttle into the airport. People just don't want to do that. If we don't make public transportation convenient, easy, accessible, people are not going to use it. So this is key. Many of us have felt since the very beginning that this was a huge mistake to not connect it to LAX, and it's now time to right that wrong for the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I was just reading the city clerk's report on files that are now being shepherded out. There's a motion I put in predates the vision of Mr. Rosendahl, but the vision of Mr. Rosendahl is very correct of calling for that Green Line there, as we all know. The thing is, too, I just want to say, who's the AGM in charge of transit? Who's the person who we're going to look at, say, this is, now you're looking at each other? See, Alan, here's what I want, and I think the committee would agree, somebody who's going to be the quarterback for it, who's going to be put on it. All the stars are falling in place to be in line. In California, we have potentially $13 billion for high-speed rail. I don't want to mess it up. I don't want to have another correction project here. I would argue with you, Mr. Rosendahl, in having it stopped right there at Carolina Pines at Aviation and Century, it should go deep into the airport.
I think so.
In my experiences, I've been fortunate to travel in my life, you get off the plane in Frankfurt, you go down to the Esbon, and you're wherever you are. You get off in London, you go down to the tube, and there you are. And so I think that's critical. I gave Alan up to Sepulveda, where maybe you get to Sepulveda, you get a little fast people mover, but there should be...
I agree.
Someone who is sitting in that chair, so we don't have that person yet, but it's got to be within your budget to get somebody who works with MTA, and I would suggest we should ask the MTA Board to meet outs at the airport to focus on this issue sometime in the next six months or year, or our committee meet out at that point. And the only thing I was totally different is, if I was totally in charge, I would flip the Green Line to be high-speed rail to the east and out of Los Angeles, and I would make the Florence, or the, what they call the Harbor Junction, a light rail through the southwest part of the city. The other thing, on that Harbor Junction, there's discussion to make it like the Orange Line, a busway as opposed to rail. But there should be somebody in that chair, and every day that's what they should do, and I think every three months, we should have a report from the airport department, because if we don't put the pressure, it's not going to happen, because you know what today's date is?
July 8th.
Right, and it just was the 7th, the day before, and all of a sudden, it was the 1st of the year...
Right.
And SC was in the Rose Bowl. You know, it just, boom, the year goes by fast. I'm just saying, unless we bound it, it doesn't happen.
Right. I agree, and I think that's one of the goals that I have, is to connect Union Station with LAX, and, you know, I think when people land at LAX, they want to be able to get on public transportation that takes them somewhere. I think it's very difficult for people that landed LAX to get anywhere, really, in a cheap, accessible...
Easy move.
Easy, efficient move. I agree, and that should be our goal in Los Angeles. I mean, we're going to make a world-class airport, but we have to connect the people
World-class transit.
To that airport.
And a world-class freeway system. One last thing.
Yes.
The Blue Line is Italian trains, and the Green Lines are Japanese trains, or vice versa. There's no connection at 112th and Wilmington, or wherever the Century Station is, the Rosa Park Station.
Kenneth Park.
Yeah, yeah, Rosa Park Station. That should be connected. And also, I think we should start now to work with the taxi people to say there's going to be a change coming, because they were vocal voice against it. I don't know if anybody's here from the taxi industry, but there's a way to look to be modern in transit in some way.
Okay, thank you very much. And before we vote on this...
Thank you.
We have two people that want to speak on this, Denny Snyder and Arnold Snacks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Your comments, thank you. Your comments have been so succinct.
I think we're going to hire this guy.
I know.
Two seconds.
Okay.
Well, that's good, because I'll take a full minute. Another study, another study, another study.
Another study, another study, another study. Have you ever got any information about your transit-oriented study for the Green Line? Have you got that back at six months? Have you gotten any information back on the Green Line connection to the Expo Line that you authorized? That's been over a year. You also need to talk about, not only the inconvenience of taking the Green Line and getting downstairs with your luggage, but actually getting on the Green Line with your luggage. There's no easy way to do that at any station. That's a real problem with the Green Line. It was never incorporated into it. As far as the Harbor Line, I went to several outreach programs, and at those programs, it was all great diagrams, great everything, but no funding for Measure R. Absolutely no funding for anything going into the South Bay from the people putting on the outreach programs. It was a no-brainer a long time ago and a political deception.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to, okay, seconded?
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move forward on this feasibility study, the final say on how, not if, but how we move and when, how we move the Green Line into LA International Airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So moved. Okay, now I believe we're going into closed session, is that right?
Madam Chair, the city attorney is going to make the findings for closed session.
Okay.
The city attorney requests closed session pursuant to government...
I need the record.
Oh, sorry, Kelly Martin, City Attorney, pursuant to government code sections 5495.6.9A and 5495.6.9B, to allow committee to confer with its legal counsel on two matters. First, a report relative to settlement discussions regarding federal aviation administration compliance review, directing Lawa to report relative to the contract with the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau, NFA findings relative to use of airport revenue to support